So call the regular meeting of the county's zoning commission and order. And Diane, will you get back to your chair? You can call the board.
I'm muted.
That's you. Yeah, and check your microphone button and make sure it's up.
Okay.
Because that's when it's on.
Okay, um, I'm gonna do the roll call. Mike Tavler.
Here.
Joey Manson.
Yep.
Tom Need.
Here.
Virginia Lewis.
Yes.
And Brittany Popovich is out today. Out today, okay.
Um, and you got, you reported your name, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, so the other person present is Jim Steele Smith. He's walking over to sign in over there. I don't know, do we have anyone on Zoom?
Not as of right now, no.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna come back with what we need. For purposes of conducting the meeting, we ask that if you want to address the mission, that you step to the podium, stick in the microphone so that it can be recorded, and also that if any event, if we have anyone participating with his ears zoomed, that we would hear what you're saying. I don't know, I do recognize from what I saw, from the login, that there seemed to have been some work done, but I don't know if that, you know, how audio two-way or not. I know that's been a problem in the past, it may be repaired, but until we've got somebody who has joined the meeting on Zoom, we can't find out if we're now receiving audio. Um, but we can go ahead and introduce the officials who are here. If someone joins us. But our zoning secretaries and an assistant, Ever Welch. I'm staying known to my left. And our zoning director, zoning inspector, Mike Cannon. And he's out in the audience, not on the video. But when it comes time for him to speak, he'll step up to the podium. We would ask that, I said already, that if you want to speak, you can step over to the microphone at the podium. And at this time, we're starting a different, slightly different process. And we need to let me provide the opportunity in a short period of time. If there's any member of the public, either in person or online, that has a specific question that they would like to ask, that now is the time to do it. So we're opening the door to questions potentially from the program.
Two of our members of the public stepped outside. I don't know if they would have questions, but.
Were they working with you, Mike? The people that left?
No, not often.
No, no, I'm just asking if they had any. They did have something, that's what we're trying to determine.
I don't think so. Well, I have something I might submit to someone. Do I do that now?
Um, no, not at this time. This is just typically what we're looking for. Somebody has a kind of a general question that rather than having it said all the way through the meeting, if we have a public comment later in the weekend, we're trying to create an opportunity upfront that if there was a quick question that you can answer, you want to deal with that upfront. So that they don't stay for an hour and a half and decide, well, I've waited long enough for a week. And then they get their answer from Mike Cannon, actually. Okay, well, that it covered, let's go on now to attend to. Are there any new applications to be submitted? Now, if that's what you're here for, this is the time for you to do that.
Okay. Well. Over here?
Yeah.
My name is Jim James or Jim Clark. And I wanted to do a rezoning of my property on Woodtown Road. And I've gone through what I believe to have all the required paperwork. Wanted to submit that today.
Okay, um, you bring the two checks for payment and thirteen copies of the material that you need to turn in. And the original was the copy.
Yes, I wanted to go from A R one to F R one. Zone again.
Um, well, if you think your original and all the copies are only to Diana, then she will distribute the copies to us and attach the application number to it. And this will be, Diane, we borrowed the territory to be tracked. But the last one we had was H T Z twenty three oh five. So those will be H T Z twenty oh six.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay.
The thirteen copies.
Okay.
That's right.
Okay.
One of which is the original, and then there should be two checks.
Yeah, I didn't want to write the checks until I knew the exact number that I'm gonna submit and where I signed my name on it, but I can do that.
Oh, you haven't calculated how much you owe?
Uh, I have, I just want to make sure it's correct.
Okay, well, I understand that that's the smart thing to do, I guess. Yeah, later on we have to avoid a check and you know. I got one check with twelve hundred. It's the things.
Two what?
Your copies, okay.
Yeah, you keep the original and then we each get our copy.
Well, there's really, I had an original. So I just keep the copies?
Yes, you keep a copy, you can keep a copy, but you need to give her the original because that's the one that stays in the file.
Oh, okay.
One trade-off, Joe?
Sure.
Okay.
So here, see when I hit four, the.
Four, four, okay.
I guess fine, I can accept.
Okay.
And if you will, everyone go ahead and write the application number on your H T Z twenty oh six.
The total acreage fee is seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents.
That's what you, you calculated. Does that match what you made? Um, check.
Seventy-eight, seven, seventy-one.
Uh-huh.
Do you agree with what you think, eight inch team?
Seven eighty-one, seventy-one, actually, seven eighty-seven, seventy-one. Twelve plus twelve hundred on the R check.
Yes.
Okay, so yeah, you do go ahead and then and.
Made out to Harlem Township?
Yes.
I have a number to assign to it.
Zero six?
Yeah, they have the.
Up at the top of the application, it says H T Z C twenty-three dash zero six.
H T Z.
C.
At the top.
Harlem Township Zoning Commission, so H.
At the top of your application is where that number is. And H T Z twenty-three is already there, and then we need to add the oh six. Okay, thank you. And Diane, I can just.
And then just put the oh six on there?
All of them.
All of them, okay.
Right, Mr. Claus, right now, I can chat. So at this point, we can look forward to our next meeting in August.
Be the seventh?
Seventh.
And then it'll be at the Grange.
It will be at the Grange. So when we, Diana, when we put, we're posting on this one, we'll have to indicate that the hearing will be held at the Harlem Township Grange Hall and we'll have to include that address.
Okay.
But that's where the hearing will be, it won't be here. And the reason for that is because the eighth is election day. And you can't get in this room.
Okay.
On Monday night before the election.
And what date is it gonna be?
August the seventh.
Thank you, August the seventh, okay. And it's gonna be Grange Hall?
It's gonna be at the Grange Hall.
Okay.
I don't know the address off the top of my head.
Okay, I will.
Um, in our usual. You go ahead.
I used to do it, I was quite put on all the times before. But with the case of that.
Harlem Township Grange Hall.
Twelve nine.
Yes, one two nine zero.
You're, they looked at a one, one, two, nine, zero, zero. So it was. And April the seventh, and you typically go seven forty-five, is that good?
Yes.
So that will be the date and time of the hearing for this application.
Okay.
Something sounded a bit incorrect, might be notified ahead of time or is that due?
Um, there won't be any specific reviews by the commission until the night of the. We're receiving it tonight. Um, and then on the seventh, we can start the hearing. We'll begin our discussion about, now, in the meantime, we're unsure that it will be posted, we're thinking of looking at it, yes. But we don't provide feedback until the night of the.
Okay.
That's all we would need to do for this evening, Mr. Claus, so thank you. And if you actually have your checks written, you'll need to send them to Diane.
Right. About now.
Anyway, at this point, we'll go ahead and start the reports. So Mike, you can go ahead.
Sure. Yeah, just wanted to, uh, not on that phone. Right now, we're at fifty-three permits for the month, as opposed to fifty-four for last year. Um, and that is for, you know, obviously. So we're running right about even with the permits. On open enforcements, really not a lot changed from the last time. It's all prosecutor's office. Lewis Road still has not given me any more information. Tobin Drive, I am working with him, he is cleaning it up. He's supposed to have a dumpster coming in to continue his cleaning. Green Cook Road, still have not been able to get ahold of the resident there to talk about, to get a good look at his property and make sure it's been cleaned up. Uh, the dump trucks at prosecutor's still. The Niggle Road curb cut issue has been cleaned up. And really, that's it, there's not been a whole lot of new activity going on. Yep, that is all. If anything new, with what's happened down at six oh five, I know it was up at the attorney's office. So still is, Cory went, he touched base with the trustee one day last week and got an email about the way they wanted to approach it. And I know they got clarification probably about Thursday of last week. They put some clarification on the way Cory wanted to go with it. So they approved that and was moving on it. Okay, so really, a lot more to watch. It's the same situation on the, on the Harlem Road one. And he has talked with the attorney on the defendant's side on the dump truck.
Okay. We'll see about that. So, all right, well, that's good, thank you. So basically, we're sort of in the hands of the prosecutor's office.
That's about all.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Yeah, um, okay. In terms of the reports, we'll come back to that. Right now, it's seven forty-five, and it will be time to open the first hearing. Um, so I will recess our regular meeting in order to open the hearing for application H T Z twenty-three oh four. And that is the application for the individual property's property.
And Gordon did?
That's the other Gordon, wait, yeah, correct.
She not coming today?
She's not going to be here, I'll be explaining the situation momentarily. Um, so with that, um, we can call the board again now.
Yes, I will.
For the hearing.
Yes. Mike Tavler Tavler, Joey Manson.
Yep.
Tom Need.
Here.
Virginia Lewis.
Yes.
Go ahead and call Brittany's name.
And Brittany Popovich is out today.
She does. Um, all right, thank you. Um, I, at this point, need to apprise you that we're not really gonna deal with these tonight except to say that what we're gonna need to do is recess till a particular date in time certain. And the reason for that being the residents who have a joint adjacent, I think there's probably still not notified. There's no letter, and Diana, she's aware of that now, and we'll be addressing it. It's possible for the letters to be sent out on Wednesday of this week so that we can then schedule a date after that. Um, it has to be a minimum of ten-day notice. So that would mean that we, obviously, we couldn't do it at a roll-up meeting next week. But because of where we are time-wise, if we want to try to get this student trustees or their meeting to receive it on the nineteenth, we would need to schedule a hearing, um. If you count, we'd need that to be on either the fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth, or seventeenth. The only, the problem with the seventeenth is we need to.
It's late on that.
We could, we could have two meetings at the same time because the, I've been assured, but not done yet, but I've been assured that there will be Wi-Fi, it'll be operational by July the fourteenth. So, that said, and then I had a conversation with Diana. Diana has offered us a suggestion, because two meetings on the same day, you did ours earlier, but I noticed that these days, maybe six, seven, and then it's pretty. So potentially, if we want to do it so we can get those completed in time to get for minutes, if you will, of our action, I should say, completed in time to get it to the close meeting. Uh, and we did it on a bill, we can meet at six thirty. And.
No, they need.
They need the seventh.
They need it at six thirty.
I'm what you said, seven thirty. Not my bad, my bad, for somebody. You mean early, six thirty, I didn't know.
Yeah, we need early.
Okay, well, then we can meet at, it's gonna be a long meeting, let's do this, let's ask you that.
Uh, ask Tom.
Is it gonna be on?
Huh?
Well, he's not on the V C A.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were talking about something else. Well, if you'll be, I'm lost, if you think you'd be done in an hour. No, we're not at six thirty, we're, V C A is seven thirty, I'm sorry. I thought we were talking about timing.
Okay, well, we're talking about your V C A meeting on July seventeenth.
We're gonna rerun this. They're gonna rerun all this timing. Uh, we're seven thirty. We should be done in an hour, wait a minute.
Yeah, but. When we, when we started at six, it's at thirty.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, yeah, that's the reason I thought it said seven, but I didn't hear it, otherwise, Johnny heard you say six thirty.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, guys.
No, going back then to what I was originally suggesting, potentially, you can meet at six thirty.
Yes, you could.
And we can meet here, then get out of here, so you can.
Right.
By seven. Yeah, what do you think, well, it's what you want to do. I guess for, well, we would have to have this hearing on Perkins, followed by the hearing on Pershing, because we've got the same issue that every.
That's fine with me, Terry won't love it, but that'll be fine. Dinner time and bedtime with both girls.
Okay, well, and let's plan to do that. Um, and if someone will make a motion then for us to recess the hearing on H T Z C twenty-three oh four.
Can I do them both simultaneously?
No, we have to close, or not, yeah, we'll recess.
Got it, got it, got it, okay.
We have to open together, so.
Then I make a motion that we recess hearing H T Z C twenty-three oh four until July seventeenth, Monday, at six thirty. Here.
At this location.
Yeah.
I'll take a hand. All right, moved and seconded. So that we have the hearing reopened on H T Z twenty-three oh four at six thirty on July seventeenth. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. So this, this hearing is done, recess until the seventeenth. And with that, then we'll close that hearing for now and recess, I should, don't use the word close. Recede to that date, and we will then move forward to, oh, it's too early. Not eight o'clock? The other hearing is scheduled for eight o'clock.
So when we're back in?
So we'll go back into our regular meeting, can't go early.
And I have a question. Um, so the, um, Courtney supplied extra addresses for her application, which will take us away from sending them to these mortgage companies. I think Sharon would send them both, send orders to the both.
I think that was one that she would.
I think she would. I think if I go to the mortgage company alone and not prove their property, the property owners will never see them. I think, I think it would be better. I mean, technically, we have to send them to the mortgage company, that's fine. But I think we also need to send them to the rental properties. Or whatever.
I, I can't just do the, I think you're right, but. So it's an extra letter, an extra stamp.
It is.
But it would be preferable, we do have to make sure that the residents are familiar with them, if they happen to not even live at that property. If you're talking about sending the property to that. But they may own the property, but not live it.
It could be a renter.
That's right. But their name will be on the double, not the rest. So.
I think there is one here, um, or Courtney's application that doesn't have inversion.
I saw that.
It does have a house on that property that has it up. And it does have an address for it. But there's no version.
There's no, there's no name.
There's no name.
No, I don't know what that means. Mike, you got any idea what it means?
Yeah, sometimes if it's a matter of security.
Well, it could be. It could be a policeman, a charitable person.
I have one on mine, too, is even a form of placement.
Yeah, and sometimes there are people who are hired from the.
Yeah.
So they don't.
They don't, yeah, they don't, according to me, I said they are at the same time.
But for this one, particularly, I mean, there are two different addresses. Both of them belong with the name.
Yeah, I thought of the police, uh, it was a possibility. What else could you do? And then she said maybe we could see somebody, you know, another court order. And we certainly need there or something, if they don't want to add this, whatever.
But even in that case, it probably would be better.
We can send it to that address, well, both of them. So in the case where it says N A, um, which answer I'm sure is not available.
I don't think so, is it?
Just, that's what I was gonna suggest. Just address that one, Diana, the resident, um, whatever it is.
Then you will have to look at the extra pages that Courtney supplied with the initial address.
And that's oh four? Okay.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's oh four.
That's oh four, okay.
That's oh four.
And I do know, for example, that on the first address, the first name, um, I know the individual personally, after so. Um, but the property address is given and no number, and no house there. Taxpayer address is in fact their personal address. But the taxpayer address is the white address.
The taxpayer address?
That.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
But I know those people, there's no, no address, there's no, no.
No, but that's.
No.
Well, that's.
No structure.
The message. What is that about?
Okay, well, that's not a mortgage company, that's the first. So we're only talking about doing that in the case of, well, there's a mortgage company's address with the taxpayer. So when we have the actual taxpayer's address, it may be different from the property's address.
Okay.
There's no need to send it to both.
Which one should I send?
To the tax. In this instance.
The taxpayer address?
The taxpayer address is not a mortgage company.
Okay.
It's the property owner.
Okay.
That's who we want to get in this notice.
All right.
Okay?
I will.
But in some instances, because the auditor's office sends the tax bill to a mortgage company, the taxpayer address is not for the individual property owner. That's why Julie was suggesting that we send it to both the property address, but it don't have the property owner's name going to that address. Does that make any sense to you? If not, can I, oh, we need to do it later on?
Okay.
Okay.
So since this is something that has been brought up before, can we make note to, even if we're not gonna do it now in the middle of the year, but come January, we're gonna check all of our papers to make sure we have indicated more clearly what addresses we're wanting?
By law, you have to use whatever the auditor. And that's what it specifies. So that's why.
Okay.
That's why Cork is saying that. But when we send our notices, we can send it out to all, to more than one address. But technically, legally, you wouldn't have.
Okay.
So we're trying to be.
Yeah, then we hear from the neighbors and they just know anything that was going on.
Yeah.
That goes to the mortgage company.
That most likely is it.
And we just, we don't need that extra hassle with the neighbors, they already.
But your points still, her points will take, and somehow, we should probably try to address that. And make sure that gets clarified for potential future.
Yeah, I was looking at the application, I'm thinking that and net acreage. Because we keep talking about net acreage, net acreage, net acreage, and on here it just says total acreage, total acreage to be rezoned. Nowhere are we asking specifically for net or growth.
I know.
And so, if the applicant doesn't have a spot to fill that in, are they just writing a random piece of paper, here's my net, here's my growth, here are the uses?
Exactly, they're, they're doing.
That's what they've done in the past, but if we're going to make it more user friendly, I think it would be beneficial for us to have some sort of form. We need your net acreage, we need your growth acreage. Are there any easements?
I'm sure I have time to get that all completed, but in fact, what you're bringing up, I wrote it down, I said, under new business, that's an item in discussion. It's bothering you for a couple of reasons, that being one of them, the other being, uh, since we've increased his fee to twelve hundred dollars, I don't like the way that we have it set up, so, I think. We need to reduce that, because I think that's the issue.
Yeah, yeah, I just think, you know, we need to try to have as many pre-made forms as possible that an applicant can simply. Plug in place their answers being too, so that we have.
The revision of the form, and that would be, uh, doing, uh, making sure that Mike is involved in that process. And then we'd also need to reduce the big procedures that we have written down, because what we currently have in place. Will need to be revised, obviously, to match, if we don't modify the forms, we have to modify our.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, if we're already halfway through the year, so I'm. I don't, I don't feel been pushed to do it tomorrow, but I think before we get to the twenty-four forms, I would, I would like to make sure we set aside time for it.
What we need to make sure that you do then, is that you get this accomplished before we have our organizational.
Yeah.
And then. So, that would be, we want to try to deal with this, uh, in our. In order to make sure it gets done.
Yeah.
By the people that are in that center. Okay, so, we will try to make sure we put that on our agenda for that time, because, well, that takes care of that, I am, when you get down to the agenda. That was one of his ads, not on the agenda I set out, uh, but we will make sure that we, uh, come back to that, okay, I think it's, yeah, eight oh two, so. We will go back into recess, and then we can, and now, um. Open the hearing for HTZC twenty-three oh five with, uh, Mr. Dan Hush. And who would, um, Diana, please call roll for this hearing.
Mike Tavon. Jeremy Manson.
Yeah.
Tom Mead. Virginia Lewis.
Yeah.
And Brittany Hopewright is out.
When she pronounced your name, Hopwright.
Oh, Hopewright?
No, Hopwright. And.
It's like a C K.
But it pronounces it as, as that A G sign, it's Hopwright.
Thank you, Hopwright, thank you.
It took me a while, but. Um, if, if you look at it, it, you may wanna pronounce it differently, I did for a long time, but I asked her to try to make sure that's true. All right, so, with that, uh, the hearing for HTZC twenty-three oh five is now in session, and. We have the, uh, same issue with this one as we did with twenty-three oh four, in that, uh, notices, written notices were not sent to the property owners. Who are adjacent across Rome, uh, in the USP, and as a result, uh, we will, uh, recess. I would recommend that we recess, and recess that you've already set the one, or two, uh, July seventeen, that we be saying for this one.
What time?
And.
Six forty-five?
Yeah, why not?
I make a motion that we recess the hearing for application HTZC twenty-three oh five to July seventeen at six forty-five P M here at the county ball, seven.
Uh, yeah, is that the other one you started at six thirty? Um. All right, that's fine, I'll come back and have to do that. And I verify the way I did verify with, uh, Cory Goats again, that we can do that. Instead of canceling the hearings and starting from scratch again. We did acknowledge that it would be permissible to do this spread. So, that we could shorten the time period, isn't that a way, uh, I'm definitely pointing to, we could do it this way. And that makes it then possible that we keep moving the process forward faster for the applicants. Okay, with that said, um, we have a motion, if someone seconded, I'm. So, that was seconded by Johnny. Uh, all in favor of recessing HTZC twenty-three oh five to July seventeen at six forty-five? All right, so this hearing now for HTZC twenty-five is in recess, July seventeen. And go back into our regular meeting.
Well, we're back in for our regular meeting, I'm glad to. We did the last time we came back in.
Um, oh, thanks, Tom, I did, but we're, we're all here. So, we need to call a roll for the regular meeting, and I didn't do that the last time.
Go ahead and do that.
Yeah.
Mike Tavon.
Here.
Jeremy Manson. Tom Mead.
Here.
Virginia Lewis here, and Brittany Hopewright is out.
We're now back in our regular meeting, and all four of us are still here. Um.
I do have a question about his, uh, his list of neighbors as well. Um, on the, on your website. For the property property that is actually similar, uh, bodies. And there's this little at symbol and four, which sends me that there are four owners for that property. He's just the first alphabetic usually. Also for Harold Bachman, there's an at B on that list, and the auditor's website. Now, that exact same piece of property, he had for the previous application. There are both of them here. Yes, for the, um, Bachman family's first property that we had earlier, um, that exact piece of property, this, uh, triangle receipt here. Um. Joe has found the actual names for the three owners for that property. This is the same property as on the new one that we're looking at. So, I assume, and the parcel number is the same, the address is the same, um, and papers should be including all three of the owners that we notified people. So, Mr. Hershey does not include the other.
I, I don't know about that property papers, like, they go through records, but I looked at the actual lead, and it's in the name of people, and that is the address. But it was told in, maybe, assuming that they were, they had the. Or even.
That, that, that's what, he said he did, he checked with the tax office, he called the tax office, he thought it's something for that.
Okay, he does understand, so, on.
We don't have that on another.
And, but I do know that, um, a brother, that every sibling is wrong, and the brothers and sisters are like, so we're not gonna be.
Yeah, we actually did have the Piper application, who is odd, not that, not that it's the exact same property as Hershey, but the same group of people. I. I, I mean, I think they generally notify, and they're all technically owners.
There is maybe reason that you cannot notify them, if, uh, even, even if the class is the same, it's our responsibility, or essentially, if you have, if you acknowledge that you can go to do that, can, or. Our practice is to do that, we take what they provide, or, yes, and, for, if it's. Contiguous adjacent to Ross Rome, um, uh, we used to do it even, the rarest, um, um, so, those people via the different, so. And we, we're, where do we get that, like, Diana, well, the person that will have to, uh, locate, and put their names on the list.
So, I think, here for the Bachman, or those ones, we both, it would be added to that one, but we actually have that information from, uh, on someone you're knowing. And that is that same, that same parcel that is on, uh, this triangle here.
I'm just trying to figure out how, how would it help Diana to do that.
But.
So, she knew, she don't know whether or not this would give her a specific application, it numbers all of that.
Or is calling the tax office, like you said, Joe Chris, and decide to use it, I don't know. I, I have not personally called the tax office to get a notification, so I don't know how much.
How they're called it is.
Exactly, so I don't know.
Uh, and we don't have much time. Tomorrow's a holiday, I can't contact anybody. Uh, and they want to send, uh, we send the notices out, well, actually, if we're doing on seventeen, there is another kind of extra day, because, um, because they have to, they need to go out at least ten days.
Well, if, if we wanted to accept that Joe got it right on the application, I can give her the addresses. But I, I don't know that, so, it don't have the other bodies.
Why, why don't you give, why don't you just add the information to the other Bachman, um, of the other application, and I'll work on the, uh, recorder's website. And, and just the other name, the name, um, and see if they, where some of the addresses in there were tied, then.
So, I do have, have those addresses and their names.
You know, the.
The bodies, they're, they're all blue, for the.
Yeah.
Um. I think they're not.
Should maybe we'll help out. Um, you can do those things, but, what I, that's, that would be, I would be happy to.
This is twenty-two oh two for the, um, body list, and it was application. Twenty-two eleven for the Bachman.
Okay, Diana, if you will, make note of those two applications in order to find those addresses, uh, this was, this was last year.
Those prior applications?
There's prior applications for other properties, that they will have the names and addresses that, uh, Julie is in, and seems to be missing in this Hershey's application.
Okay. From last year. Okay.
It would be last year, and she, this application is twenty-two oh two.
And twenty-two eleven.
And twenty-two to eleven, where you'll find it, and it would need for, uh, especially, in order she understands these properties, like. This is for the property, uh, associated with, uh, the Bachman and Connie, am I correct?
So, number one and number four?
Number one and number four.
On the application twenty-three oh five.
There are missing names and addresses, and we'll find them in the, those other two applications.
Okay, from last year.
Yeah, yeah, if you don't mind staying a little bit afterward, we can, you know, so, it means years that they have to look up.
That's, okay, if you're willing to do that, Diana, then we don't necessarily have to look up the old, she's got the application, which is.
Oh, thank you, John.
Pull it right off of that.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I just, I was really familiar with your tax filings, like, that's all my thoughts.
Well, I'm glad, I mean, I'm glad that it looked for those, you need to identify that. Um, if it had gone through, uh, without that, it would not have been, like, a transit, or, an error to the point where it was, uh, meant. And, you know, it would have been an illegal hearing, because, because, uh, we make our best effort, and you're adding, that, that's exactly what you're doing. You, you saw it, and you pointed it out, it was good, thank you, it's a blessing. All right, anything else, Johnny, before we move forward to that? Uh, all right, continuing with the agenda, um. I've already made the one that Melton, I wanted to make about the, um, what's going on with the green card, um, that, that's supposed to be operational by the fourth team, but we're not gonna have our hearing there, than we have it here, on the seventh. But. Be nice to know for sure that they give the time, and that it's there, if we're gonna use, use it on, we can have a, uh, we can, and here, there on August seventh, that's right, if we're really using there on the seventh. Um, anything from you, Johnny?
No.
You done it. You done it.
I know, I always.
Tom, anything you need to report on it?
Uh, just one thing, uh, the Strategic Planning Committee is working on, uh. This from six, or, I don't think, the, and the third overlegislature. Um, along County Line Road, uh, from the north end of the township, down to, to, um. Strategic planning is, please, not going to be tomorrow, this is the last one. We will leave again on Tuesday, July eighteen, at which time your hopeful, uh, um, a reputable of those that overlegislature, we're going County Line Road overlegislature. As well. Um, and if we don't complete that work by the eighteen, we will leave again on July twenty-fifth, to complete it. So, the intention is to have that recommended to the zoning commission at our regular meeting on Monday, August seventh, and the application by August seventh. Um.
We're looking to have, uh, potentially, and that's why I got this I am under the name of this, we're looking to have the application, um, that's all right. The zoning district, uh, may be to admit, send an application for the, uh, zoning commission to consider on, at receipt on the seventh.
Correct, at our regular meeting on, on the August seventh.
Okay.
Um, if that's the case, and if we, uh, public notices go out, um, we could hold the hearing as soon as August eighteen, but we don't have to. Um, instead, I think where, what we're looking at, according to how we've been considering schedule, is that we would meet, we would hold a special meeting on Monday, August twenty-eighth. Um, to. This would be a public hearing, February, from Monday, August twenty-eighth. Um, which we would continue to run still the following Monday, but unfortunately, that's Monday, so we'll be on Tuesday, September fifth. Um, between which, we expect to have the Delaware Regional Planning Commission, which recommendation by August eight, it looks, so. Go back, Monday the twenty-eighth, we will hold a first hearing. August the thirty-first, Thursday, August thirty-first, we will receive recognition, uh, from National Planning Commission, and we would bring the first hearing out of recess on Tuesday, September sixth, um, September fifth. Um. Or, um. Um, and if we do that, try to use community on Wednesday sixth, to receive it, uh, they can stay. At their public notice, uh, ask either that Wednesday, or Friday. Um, and they can hold their public hearing, and their final action, that they're ready to do on Wednesday, September twenty. Okay, one of these, we'll get it on the Monday, the seventh, but we have family special meeting on Monday, the seventh, that's the biggest, uh, biggest question we need to resolve.
Okay, so that, those comments, we may, you can, the I am, I need to do it in the meeting. Right, which is, um, a special, we need to pass. And there's only, the, the article will be article thirty five.
Correct, and, and it will be referencing the procedures that was already adopted. Procedures before it was adopted, and much of the overlay district is a common page from existing mixed mixed district. On some due date. Um, many things that will change on the actual boundaries of the district. Um, and the permitting would be the biggest. But all of the, um. Development standards will basically be.
So, well. Two minutes, or is there or eight minutes?
Uh, it will be back from the city.
So while the eastern side, well.
Then.
No, I, I.
Yeah, and you're. How's this going?
It could be, it's going to be less than, it could be less than eight.
Yeah, and, and that's going to be part of it.
Yeah.
The northern section has no party.
Yeah.
Is it, Jen, I'll let you ask this question, is this going to be? Residential only, residential commercial, residential, commercial, and industrial? I mean, mixed use, how broad are we talking?
Mixed use? Mostly, um, business and industrial. But there's a little franklin of.
There will be some, uh, sections to address the possible industrial. I would have someone.
Yeah, it, it will be all laid out, what kind of industrial use we, it's all laid out.
That's all going to be under the permit.
Right.
Yeah.
And then it's all laid out for, uh, your business uses like we did before.
So that were the primary differences compared to what we've already adopted for?
Most, most of the primary differences, uh, will be the industrial.
Yeah, but, but the permitted uses will not match the permitted uses on some.
No.
In, in part because of, say about thirty seven. And in a connection with downtown in Thunder and very white views and a very hefty traffic. Uh, actually, it's in Tulsa side, and I said before, um, that's going to be, uh, developed. Without a lot of that. It's, it's the length, it'd be too valuable to support this.
I just want to be certain, you know, in our, in our zoning codes. We have specified very specifically, because we were told that we had to have a location in our zoning codes. For sexually oriented businesses to be put.
Well, that's why. That's why on my corner of the thirty seventh and, uh, South County Line Road, we got a spot like this.
Well. The industrial area that we have met and we have in our block here does specify it's only that route right along thirty seven.
Overlay district.
Yeah, the overlay is our show, that's that.
Yeah, so they could, they could still do that if, if they want to, because if they. Right there at thirty seven, because that is already used.
It's, it's already done.
It's not done.
It's, it's allowed to be done in that.
Uh, I think anybody's conscious, the last, the last, the way I read the article. Although that's. Well, there's no, the designation under the zoning articles. Means that, yeah, it could be applied to it. But you also look at it, it's like the, what's in the area that we live in. Uh, that's horrible. Well, that's horrible.
Actually, it's the deviation responsibility, because the residents will have. Seventy thirty church.
It's a conditional use. That, but they have to have the zoning first, that's what I'm saying. They don't have it approved, that it, they can't go, they can't go to the P C A. Yeah, they would have to have it re-zoned industrial before they could go. I mean, otherwise, uh, the P C A. Takes over the whole responsibility of zoning committee, and we don't need to do this.
Oh, there you go.
Okay. That's fine, if you want to go along with that. Okay, so, uh, I'm thinking about that very seriously.
Yeah, uh, um. What, but the question, I think the question right now is. Of course, we're going to. They go special meeting on the twenty eighth to start the process of adopting this. And then we'll go to. But then trustee, then by the twenty.
We're, we're talking.
Twenty eighth of August.
Right, not July. Twenty eighth of August. But Tom, and. Strategic planning and the trustees at that end of the chain, they've also been involved, it's something discussed about there. With Holly, she's looking at how to try to move this whole thing forward and put this in policy.
No, I know it's the last ones, we had the time frame of wanting to get on for the August election, is that what's fueling this? So.
Well, well, November.
Well, yeah, I said, yeah, refer.
No, that's not necessarily what's, what is, what's, it'll be too late.
Yeah, what's feeling that's, uh, uh, you see the, the land that I'm going to move off of, uh, Duncan Plains, you take me to.
So Monro County Township, which is just east of us. Um, and just north of Jersey Township. Um, New Oldham Company and other landowners that already applied for an education, Johnstown. That was Dr. Webber, it was a big section, it was part of Valley and Big Road, just the. Me, Dammel Road. Amazingly, Johnstown comes running south to Buckright against. And Bull. And, um, but that's just the first piece of Monro County Township. And as I said, there's more. It's a pressure, it's, it keeps the ground, you know, to follow that. And, and we want to be in a position where we have this enrolled by New Oldham, you know, the landlords. We want to be able to process that.
So I guess follow up question, and I would just, just to verify. If we approve all of this, the public gets sixty days?
Thirty.
Thirty. Okay, and if there's a referendum, it won't be on the ballot until?
If there were a referendum, it would be on the ballot in the fall.
Okay.
In twenty twenty.
So then, nobody could do. Anything, they have to do existing, or, or annex. But if there's not a referendum, then it goes into effect with the federalship.
Yeah, I'm trying to, if, if the trustees were to approve it on September or whatever, twenty, twenty. Then thirty days from that date.
Okay.
It would only move back. If there's no referendum.
Yeah.
And if it's not, uh, even if, if the trustee feels blue, it should certainly still be. Even if it's the court. Um, it is court, but that's a different.
Yeah, yeah.
So, there are growing pressures, and then they bring townships. Um. And, and that pressure, I'm looking for, so it's not simply down in Jersey Township. Off to the southeast, and that's, and now it's in Monroe Township, which is directly. Uh, and it's Johnstown, so, um. I don't think we have to worry about New Oldham to ignore, because they don't want. The residential development, but although on the schools. Johnstown and Monroe School District. So there you go.
Is, is President doing anything?
That I know of. And. So, uh, I mean, we're not going to be doing anything in terms of making, uh. Announcement at this point, because we have to wait to see what adds, comes forward, or what Tom is asking for us. Considering that maybe the business is, is that we would, uh, plan to schedule a special meeting. On the twenty. With the expectation that we would have the. Doing zoning district committee to us on the seventh. But if we don't receive it on the seventh, then it isn't scheduled.
It's not a special meeting.
It would be on the seventh. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we, we will do a special.
Yeah, once, once we're special, we've got it down to a minimum grade. There's just a few little things we've got to hash out, so we don't get, we've got a special meeting already lined up. Yeah, we're going to have it to the level crawling.
Overall purpose is all, we're looking to try and move this all schedule.
Yeah.
And we'll have it two weeks before the first hearing on it. And then another week before the second. So, there'll be a lot of time to be, like, to create the tools and. And questions, and power questions, and why do you do this way? But I think, I think three weeks is enough of a time, if you feel comfortable setting up. Another one, maybe, and August.
But, but we already scheduled another special meeting this one, so it's, it's more a recess. You know, at the end of it, um, but for, um, so all of this. We need to make a commitment that we do it, and put it on our calendars. Uh, that is going to, that is going to potentially happen. But we won't actually announce it to the public, put it out of, of the schedule to the public. Until we know that we're going to have, that we have on August seventh, right? So, if that's it, is everyone comfortable, uh, putting it on our calendar for twenty eighth of July? Anybody have a significant concern?
I don't know, I don't have a calendar.
I don't have a. I have a legal, my calendar, I'm not going to be out of town till twenty eighth. Uh, I don't deserve the time for it. And we plan to start the, uh, the meeting at, um, seven thirty, and then the hearings, uh, shortly thereafter. But in the channel, it is, uh.
No.
And that's going to be the topic.
Yeah, and, and, and as it says, I don't plan for us to sneak and blow it on the overlay that night. Because we won't get the recognition from National Planning until the first of August.
Yeah, we did, we had a, we could potentially. Not do it, but then we just, we had one shot at it. And instead. Do it this way, potentially, then we have a short, we. Needs to, actually, any of that, you know, the, 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 and since we're only meeting here. One article, which we can. All right, well, let's plan on that. Now, did I have any other questions about that? I think the. That was the main, try to be proactive, you know? Getting the township to the position to have options available to, rather than. Waiting for it to happen, and then you start losing land. You, you are probably, like Johnstown, or New Oldham, New Southmore, Thunder, or. Uh, wherever it might be that the developers need to go, because they could get the services and, uh, the options that is zoning. So, we have an option out there, and usually businesses are, or fighting the shame. To keep it within Harlem Township.
Yeah, I think, I think Monroe Township, and we. Must, it's more. That whatever's going to happen, is going to happen without, without it.
Yeah, it will. If you do it, then New Oldham will want to do it, they want to move the process forward. They can buy land, and it can only hold for so long, you gotta do something. Have to tax it, uh, on the property regardless, really got to eat in that thing.
So if you look at this, these people, they say, they say, they're south of Duncan Plains Road. Uh, New Oldham Company, you know, another hundred odd acres, north of Duncan Plains Road, Skyline Duncan Plains Road, further west. Which they will, obviously, have to be on next to, uh, next to Johnstown. Uh, so there you go, they're slowly moving north and west. In our direction. That's topic.
No, I mean, once they open up and load towns like that, that is.
Probably going to speed up.
Yeah.
Probably.
So, uh, if I might interject, you guys know, um, one thing we're doing is, we're going to have another meeting, uh, like. And that is to talk about a jet, you know, and a partnership, uh, that will seal off the township. Whoever we build with, will seal off the township so it can't be in it. That's the next thing. So, we're moving forward, Holly, by senior with them.
That would be the entire township?
No, just, there's overlay.
Okay.
Wherever you're, yeah.
Yeah.
But if we create a barrier, then.
We're creating a barrier, now it still, it still remains in Harlem Township. It's just that you're partnering with whoever you want to jet with.
Yeah.
Uh, so you can't have, and they have a, they have a tax system, okay? So Harlem Township cannot do income that.
Right.
But whoever we partner with can. So what happens is that keeps somebody from in anything else, because then those people should double tax. And the tax only goes on new people. But, and new buildings.
And the tax, the tax is split, uh, between the township and the municipality.
Right, but what that does.
Sure, coming after the township.
But we are having, so you understand, and I don't know if this is moving, um, this gets hopefully done. And we are going to pre-present, Westville already knows what we're working on. So there are first meet big meeting, to see what they have in mind, so we can start instituting that. Again, that'll be the barrier that keeps these people from coming through, uh, into Harlem Township, and then we'll remain controlled, in control.
So. Yeah, Jay, it's a annoying thought to go to.
No, we, uh, found out a little quirk in the law about halfway through, you're allowed to skip an entity. So, we, we can skip over, you don't have to be. Holly did one, don't like this one. She skipped on the southern end of Jersey, when they put an overlay in, they skipped all the way to Whitehall.
All the way to Whitehall?
You're allowed to skip an entity. So when you look, if there's nothing, you know, maybe it's past, or something was in the way, but they had to skip one. So, so by doing that, if we have a loss. So we were thinking, man, we don't want to do with New Oldham.
Yeah, well, Westerville, we're very close to, the Westville School is a great town.
Yeah, yeah, so Westerville, the reason they're interested, I believe it, for your, for your information, I believe they're interested because they're ownless landlords. So, um. They have some, they supposedly have some things that they can share with us and help us, they have resources. And, uh, so if we can make a deal and no promises. Uh, but when they look at the whole township, they were asked about Valina. And so far, Valina has told us they're not willing to deal. And if the stories come in, they want to in it, from Valina. And, uh, Westerville says, well, we have some ideas about that too. So, don't know, haven't been to the big meeting yet, but hopefully, they come up with some ideas that will help us. And, and continue on, so.
Who knows if they're in it?
Who?
Westerville.
No, no, well, they probably would be if they could.
So the air station.
Yeah.
But the.
I know, I know, because we always thought it had to be the city next to you, all the, you, you're right, but it doesn't. So, that's giving Harlem Township some options that we originally didn't know it had. So, and then, like I said, all the land still remains in the control of Harlem Township. And, uh, I actually got sort of excited when they said they had something in mind to help us with Valina, because Valina is not being a lot of.
But if you look at Monroe Township, that's, you know, they lose, they lose its zoning control. They need whatever revenue they might earn. You know, and part of it is, is the savings out of two days.
Well, then, in it's still one.
Well, yeah, I told them that there's.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, the, the control is totally gone, that, yeah.
Well, and it's, it's still, and it's all of the Monroe Township. I mean, they have to go in school district.
Well, I didn't realize how far south they went, so I was at the Randall Milling Bean Store on fifty two. Um, so I, I, you know, I seen. Um, so I, I said, you know, I seen this a while back, I said, I see, uh, um, water pilots down all the way to Duncan Plain. And they've got sewer lines down. I mean, they, they're further south than these are. And, uh, so obviously, New Orleans companies looking at this, so they're having sewer constraints. Coming from south and all of a sudden they've got Johnstown here, and boom, now they're starting in it. Because they have, they have the water and sewer, and, uh, you know, it started spreading on that. But I didn't realize how far south they were originally, because when you drive that, you don't think there's anything there, but it really is there.
Okay, well, we're, uh, scheduled, putting it on our calendar, it's been scheduled in that special meeting of the twenty eighth and, uh, assuming we use this on the seventh. And we'll leave here. Uh, okay, um, any other, um, reports, uh, just in the.
Well, my only thing is, Tom, I know you had talked about the presentation that the thing. County was doing at the library in Johnstown, were you able to go to that? Did you learn anything super? You're excited?
What, um. So it's, it's a complete whole planning deck, uh, genuinely, uh, run through. Um, and they have looked at the Western half of the county, and it's already wrapped around right now. Um, and how it's likely to develop over the next point of years. A, nothing done, and B, if there is some planning. Um, and they looked at the size of each township, for example, population size, and what's likely to happen to those, those things in Monroe Township. I don't know what it is right now, I mean, four thousand people, but, um, but. What they expect to happen is that over the next one year, so if you know, two thousand, and since Monroe Township. Nothing, nothing happened, now with the annexation. Hope that's wrong, that could turn into, you know, very dense, uh, apartment complex. To have the people working at, uh, and Intel and Amazon and Meta and Google or the other. There was a map that they showed, a picture of where that two thousand was right up against County Road and. You know, we're not, we're not doing planning on the ground, we're just saying, Monroe Township is a whole, probably gonna grow by the scale to me. And that's sort of, um, planning what they're, they're not, they're not doing kind of detail side, that where they're just, in terms of zoning resolutions, in terms of the land. There were much broader views, and particularly with seventeen or eighteen different entities, townships.
They're looking at the, they're looking at the entire county, it's not a.
We have to.
Okay, but you did say on the western side, so.
So they can't, they're, they're not really telling anybody what you have to do in addition to, in terms of the zoning, in terms of like, uh, development, in terms of the population growth. But they're trying to link everybody together, so we can see how they will, how they're interconnected and how their status form is gonna provide rest of.
They, you know, they're. They driving any of those, and clearly it's gonna impact, it's gonna drive. And so you never.
You've got, uh, uh, the meeting, uh, before we should go in Alexandria, where they're putting in, uh, two, um, apple. Pounds on Alexandria, um, and the township. Resident growth, but, um, I'm not gonna do that. They need, um, approved from Ohio today, therefore.
Yeah, yeah, they love it.
Right.
So it's been able, you know, of anything.
Uh, so, you know, there again, you know, um, in ways like foresight, property owners decide, you know, and they will. They only property, you know, building that whole plant, they'll be, they'll be the rest of it down.
A little probably run, put it down.
So I got, no, you don't, but.
So, anyway, that was.
And you never see many fingers from Delaware towns, who's something similar on the east end.
I think we need to have to name it in the township.
There's gotta be some method, and they're always talking about, uh, I assume they want interchange.
Well, I, you know, they're, they're talking about a, a Sunbury Parkway, coming up and doing interchange with Saturday, thirty six, thirty seven. Where it enters the case, and they'll bring that, you know, they've got, it's, it's, there'll be a new interchange. Not a four-way, you said, you won't feel, if you're coming south on seventy one and you want to get off on thirty six, you'll, you have to get off where the current takes you. From pretty south, there's not gonna be a way to go west on thirty six. Um, which they would go east on, or hook up with it. Anyway, the Sunbury Parkway, those springs, and it ends at the Kroger shopping center in, uh, in Thunder. No, no provisional, in fact, we got.
Rest of.
We got everything.
They're, they're working on it.
Yeah, they're working on it.
They, they are, they, the, the idea, the eye on the sky, you know, they, you know, roses and everything, is they gotta do an analysis all around Thunder. And they don't know what to.
But can you set it for your deck, I'm just gonna drive up, up an hour right into the, it's not very, and they say, well, it was.
Well, they gotta, they gotta do something, and they know that, uh, so, and they gotta do something with Johnstown.
They gotta do something.
They, they got for now, a little out of California with Johnstown. The, the semi's and stuff all go right to the Harvard. Yeah, so, uh, O D and R and, and the higher up to do that kind of stuff. Uh, Carl has seen something that has gotten somebody, but they're trying to figure that out, um, I don't know.
So now why, why not leave it sort of like Westerville is, where you got Route Three going right through the center, I mean, that's, I, it's a headache, especially with those. Two things, not gonna say the next word, parking spots they put in front of the post office. But.
Yeah, I, I think Sunbury, they have problems with commerce.
Yeah.
Yeah, you just, you're gonna back up, you're gonna back up traffic, right, I'm probably already backed up. But when you get the engine and those places rolling, because they run twenty-four step, they're gonna run semi twenty-four seven.
Yeah.
And they gotta go north, and, uh, a bunch of them gotta go south. But you got all this industry and every, and teen populations in the north. Uh, I was reading a, uh, an ad that a realtor put in about a industrial place up there. And, uh, you're, we're within ten hours, Sunbury's within, you know, and around here, we're within ten hours of Detroit, Chicago, New York, Indianapolis. You got all these areas, which trucks gotta go there.
Yeah.
They're, they're just gonna go there, everybody thinks, everything's going to one sixty one, but they gotta go down. And so they gotta get these, they gotta get through that interchange.
Let's not focus money on the highway system and go back to trains. And a great train infrastructure, and then we let it all run away.
Well, you know Honda did that, that was great. Uh, they built, they built a rail spur, remember they did, they built a rail spur into Honda. And so all those cars and stuff, majority of them go out on rail car. Now, I mean, you still get some semi carrying, you know, cars, Hondas, from there, but they, they built a, um, a, a rail spur, and most of the, uh, manufactured cars that Honda go out on rail.
It was.
Before your time, but, yeah.
So. If there's, if there's, all we think, they know if we'll consider that, but I don't believe that'll happen.
I, I think things are happening too fast.
No one, no one in the Ohio government thinks poorly.
Just that, yeah, just that, and that was the last one, I think.
Alright, let's, um, let's go on to our next item, which will be the minutes. And we've got two sets, we've got, uh, three and five, let's do that one first. Uh, these minutes have been submitted to us electronically, I have, you know, and then my comments, I know John has done likewise, and I think, uh, the.
Yes. But I only see one thing on the.
And if you have any corrections or changes, uh, we can certainly, uh.
Yeah, I just, I read them this evening, um, just a, a few, a few things. Um, on the first page of their applications, one, two, three, uh, four, downward, start from the wave. Um, yeah, that, uh, second sentence, uh, the green stamp on continually, the description that it is five point zero zero four, whatever word acres.
Um, you will.
And I'll just.
Thank you, okay, well, that's good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then, uh, two, uh, or the next, uh, next line, that being said, I brought three checks. And that's for five point zero zero four, insert word acres, to give it going. Uh, the next paragraph is Lewis and the classing, uh, so we have, I would add word A, one hundred and sixty-five dollars per acre, I would add the word acreage to the.
You'll put that in there for me?
Yes.
Thank you, okay.
And then on the top of the second page, one, two, three, four, five lines down, uh, the dump truck issue is also in the attorney's hand. Uh, there is a new one on Wheels Road, which is Wheels Road.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's. That's all.
Thank you, Tom.
On that same second page, one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph down, the one comma is still red, but that's a very, very minor issue. Mr. Lee, also comma, the comma is red, or in, in red for something, so.
I haven't, which one did I pass, red, you know, red.
If it doesn't get fixed, I don't think it's gonna change the meaning of anything.
Oh, I said the red comma.
Yes.
Thank you, of, of it.
I made the motion that we approve the June fifth regular minute meetings, uh, regular monthly meetings, minutes, as per.
Alright, good, like, uh, second by attorney. We have a motion, um, to approve, any further discussion? During none, then, uh, all those in favor, if you're promising, I, 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 opposed, no. Alright, these minutes are approved as corrected. Um, now Diana, did you get all those changes, or do you need a copy with the mark?
Oh, I got Tom's copy now, I don't know.
I'll give you the copy.
Yeah, just, oh, lucky, yeah.
Yep, it's all in there.
I don't need one for you then.
Nope. Give her mine then.
Thank you, yeah, I'll get it corrected.
You, uh, you will not need to send anything more back to the commission, because you make the corrections.
And it'll be fine.
Get them ready, uh, during the minutes book.
Okay.
And it's on point in June two.
I have, I have you guys sign, oh, I have to, huh.
Yeah, I'm waiting.
You're further than I am in reading, if I sign something you are, because I don't think that it ever got back to me. I probably, I don't know, it's, it is a lot. Thank you, it isn't too risky tonight. Okay, now we're ready to move on to the minutes for two twelve. And I was absent from that meeting, so I did not, uh, maybe spend time including and sending me in the comments, but. For three of you, um, have the, have the opposite of me, I know that, uh, they're working these days, so. I don't have any issues with what's here unless, uh, there are other, uh, adjustments that you can make. I, I just have one on the fourth page of the. One, two, three, four, four, um, the third underbrett, where it starts, it's gonna be, we have trade residential districts. And then the next sentence, then we have the overlay districts, I'd like to insert the word, a minimum of twenty-five and forty acres.
Okay. You'll write down forty acres, thank you.
And that's going.
Okay.
Then I make a motion that we approve the workshop minutes from Monday, June fourth, as second, second.
We have a motion named by Antonio, seconded by attorney, um, we see the minutes as corrected, we can do that. Any discussion? During none, all in favor, please, if you're not, say no, alright, I, if you're saying no. These, uh, minutes are approved as corrected.
Now, it's kind of steep now, I just, I just now noticed that we don't have members absent listed on here.
On which one, Jimmy?
The, the June fourth.
Okay.
We have two members absent. We have, and the members present, members absent.
Okay.
I make a motion that it's contingent upon the addition of the absent members.
And that's June twelfth?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, so that, um. In essence, we're reconsidering the rule and making the amendment in the motion.
Yes, I have amended the motion to include that we must add the absent members.
Members present, which is then is absent.
Yes.
Okay.
And that we force the, uh, written.
And that's June the twelfth?
That's June twelfth, yeah. Five, well, we were all present, so there wasn't a need to say members absent, because there's no one that's absent.
Okay.
I have to second it, it's up for, and I approve of the amendment.
Okay, so then, we have amended motion, look, in the minute. Um. On Monday, June twelfth, uh, and there, uh, now two corrections, one including the members absent, and then the other one includes for, uh, which is. Evidence earlier, where you're adding the outreach, uh, with a minimum of, you know, seven, and that's. So, now all those in favor, I'm sorry, I'm gonna take that too soon, but, um, the motion to approve these as corrected. Moving seconded, any further discussion? During none, and all in favor, please, if you're not, say no, I, I, opposed, no. The minutes, um, are approved as, um, different amended motion. Approved, uh, as corrected with the amended motion. Okay, so. With that said, uh, that takes it down, uh, on our agenda to own business. Uh, I didn't have any questions, but I did want to bring up, uh, the fact that we're, we're scheduled next month to have a, a workshop meeting. Um, and based on the discussion from the last, uh, meeting, workshop meeting. What I gathered from looking at those minutes, was that the evidence was still gonna be on our team, will PRD thing be kind of postponed?
Yes, because the thought is, once those new procedures are in place.
They are in place.
Then, then we can take those and work off of those, instead of working with our existing and trying to move.
Now, there was some discussion about PRCB, our PRCB also, wasn't there?
Yeah.
But I don't know that we necessarily, I, I never remember reading in the minutes that Scott suggested that we wait until things got finalized.
Yes, and so I believe now that those procedures are finalized, he's going to take a look at the finalized procedures and see if. We can get the TRCB procedures.
Why don't, the TRCB, why don't we simply put in a statement that, you can approach in the document. The document. Uh, they don't need to be. Written in the document.
I'm, I'm not sure we're, we're actually right on it. Uh, I think, I think what's. The percentage of the next two. And the procedure for the, the, the.
That's correct, I, I said P R C B, but what was earlier, the ones with the cluster.
But it hasn't gone through the, the, the. So it's not quite in effect.
Now, that one's not in effect.
So the C R C B and the P R C B are the ones that were trying to use the same procedure?
Alright, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that, you're correct, Tom, alright, the thirty day period is enough on the C R C B.
Yeah.
Right, and I think that's what we have to wait.
That's what we're waiting for.
Yeah.
And that makes sense, yeah.
I don't think that's, that's not gonna happen by next, next month.
It won't happen by next month, no. Uh, now with the P R D. I'm getting to the point where I'm gonna get it and think, we don't even need that. Well, that's the amendment we want just eliminated.
So we have one.
Well, I asked, I mean, that question.
That's, that's Keller Pines, so correct.
Yeah, that's Keller Pines, is approved as the R D.
And we did talk about that with Scott, as pulling it out, saying, this is only used for Keller Pines, never again.
Yeah, um, and, and, and I think part of that discussion was, what I had brought up, uh, along with, at the Sunday twelve. We have straight zone districts, one acre, two acre, five acre straight zones. And we have overlay districts that start minimum of twenty-five acres. How do we, how do we? Bridge that gap? And part of that was, the P R D was intended to bridge that gap, but also the P U D. Plan B. Now, Holly mentioned both of them, because I asked her specifically, do we vote? And is this what we need to bridge this gap? And she basically came back and said, the P R D that you have now. You need to take parts of two different. Parts of the Ohio Drive, go with five point two zero twenty-one A. And five point two zero twenty-one C. If you remember. A, which you've gone next year, C, which you've gone the, up to residential, and is different. And the procedures to get. And the existing, or either Scott, mixing those things together, is not the new work of law. Or. And she has recommended was, Rob.
She's recommended, Scott.
Yeah, she said, get rid of it and, or from a P U D. Use that as you bridge the team. By making some.
I think what Jerry asked is about, and what does that mean for Keller Pines?
Yeah, they no longer have it.
We know, they no longer exist, they no longer have.
So we'll have to do it like we were talking about doing the R two, and since we were in that discussion with R two, we had talked about saying. We're going to stipulate that only the R two that exists now. Can exist, there will be no future R two, and so we could do the same thing with the P R D and say, only Keller Pines exists. There will be no further P R Ds.
They would eliminate the zoning. Article.
Correct, we would just never see an application for P R D ever.
Modify the article, so that somewhere in that article, it's something applicable to.
Yes.
Keller Pines.
Yes.
And it cannot be used for any new deal. If, if that's a legal thing that can be done, like, down smoothly. As a good option.
So I'm, I'm just gonna try to get more, take more, more, more. More ideas from Holly on that. Um, after we get settled on the, uh, uh, we'll call it the online mode, we should build one.
Okay, but for our reading next week, what will be the focus, I think are the, are two.
That's my understanding.
That's Scott already has the.
Yeah, I think, I think Acton's thought. What he's currently. Planning to bring to the, um, on this. Will be the way to go, but he, he did have an idea of what he was wanting to do.
Okay. That, that's really kind of getting at, my question is, what is it that? We, we're about to create expectations for Scott, and if, if it's already there, fine, but if there's anything that he needs to see. To communicate with him.
No, I think at this rate, he's sort of leading it, and we're going to figure out some more information about the R two and see how.
I read, I did, I saw that in the minutes.
Yeah, how to write it as. These are the only R two that we're ever gonna see.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure, maybe John R two. Without sewers, once we get sewers, R two is valid. Don't use. One acre with sewers, and you're, you're up in racism. But one acre without sewer, I don't know what it's called, I don't know. Um, but, that, that would say it's my recommendation. Uh, that he missed. But I don't know what Scott recommended, or if I.
Okay, well then, what I'll do is.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll get in touch with him. Uh, uh, unless you think we would be better at communicating. And basically, all I would be got would be to say. What is it that? You are planning and expecting to do at this next meeting?
Yeah, which is fine, because he knows that you weren't there.
Right.
With the last one. Would expect to bring you up to date on that.
And then, uh, the, kind of the expectation being, right, but other was, that was on R two. I mean, that, he asked me, I was going, that was the sentence I had from the rest of the commission. The, the primary.
And if we close the door on R two. Without sewers. And whatever exists, this, however it got included. But no more. You can't, you can't rezone a property with R two. In most of these. That's supposed to.
Yeah.
But, yeah, you can rezone a property with R two, if you didn't have access. And I think that's a place that.
Yeah. It, it seems like you can hear me. Yeah, I have something for in tune.
About less than forty-five acres.
That's less, yes, anything that's less than forty-five acres. Kind of gives less.
Well, but if we can potentially revamp the P U D. To make it a more desirable bridge, then maybe we can help to avoid some of. The R two, because I think. Based on what we've heard from the residents in the past, I don't think anyone wants R two, I don't think anyone is really aware that R two exists. It's been in there for. Over, over. That may be, that doesn't mean everyone had it, had their head in the sand, and not.
It, it's been there since eighty-eight.
Yeah, I think people should be expecting. Changes. Besides the operation, I think they're gonna. I, my sewers come in. I don't disagree with you on that, I just. Have been here for all of the meetings, for, how do we ever get down to two acres, I thought the minimum was five? And there's no thought or consideration of. Without sewers, that's never a comment that's brought up, it's always, I thought it was five, I thought it was five, I thought it was five. So, yeah, the same.
Okay.
I don't think so, but if you, if you look on, if you look on the land, there already exists. Less than two acre property.
Lots of.
I'm not, I'm not arguing with you, I'm, I'm aware that they're there, I just. Think that residents aren't necessarily aware.
They do arrest.
So, I mean, if you look at, at a typical two acre parcel. If the house wasn't built right in the middle of it. Then you might have to split it, to be, to have to.
Net or gross?
It's still a net. Right, and, and it's still gonna be, you know, uh, where's, if, if one house gonna be on set, then the other house on sewer? And that, you split it, does it all have to go sewer? You know, um, but, I think, you know, those kind of small lots, but you can do that as. What we're trying to avoid is, and, and twenty acres of parcel. Rather than go to consummation, just give it a developed consent, and say, I'm just gonna put, I'll rather forty, you know, forty odd, you know, twenty odd, you know, R two. Parcels, and, and build like a suburb, that's what I'm trying to.
Yeah, well, that is real.
And the other one, you know, like, a one acre, it's written lots for that. It'll, it'll optimize the control.
And within one sewer.
And, and it won't have a, to me, to me, to me. So, uh, within the next. Three or five years? Okay. Yes. Awesome. Okay. Uh, reference to fixing the end.
The whole is a figure, I haven't heard any blocks. But the hole has definitely grown in size, at the sewer diameter. Diameter, you can't really see depth from the.
I don't know that, but. But the only reason you get any sense of depth is, but if you driven by and you've seen them roaring.
Yes.
Uh, I don't know what to call it, it's like walls, you know, steel walls.
Yeah, to, to keep the hole from falling in.
Yeah.
So I had a, a question about that, if, if nobody in the township has really been notified, and several members, lots of members of the township are on well water. And they're digging this hundred and eighty foot shaft well below the water table, and they're hypothetically pumping it out. So that they can work and not be underwater. How is it not pumping people's wells dry, or are they, and they just don't care?
And where, where is it going? I mean, there's no, uh, uh, evidence that I've seen, yeah.
Of water being pumped out.
They're pumping it out, where, where are they going?
Or is it going across the street where they just did a bunch of drainage work, like in front of that church, has that been hooked into the sewer already and been.
I don't know whether, but they did, we had a small retention part there, uh, but I, I haven't noticed that there's any water in it. You know anything about it, Mike?
I just, I, we don't, we don't use our well, we have a well, I'd be curious to take the top off and see how much is in it, cause I mean, what are you on city morning? We're on Delco, yeah.
I don't know, but. If, if there's an impact, um. Eventually, the public will make it know. For sure, somebody will be coming into the, have, so Steve's office will comply.
Despite the fact that we have no control and had nothing to do with this.
No, I didn't stop it.
Well, I'm aware.
I didn't stop that complaint.
Yes, yes, I know.
I mean, the only thing I heard was that, um, the fire chief hadn't been notified, and he said. You can't.
Shut it down?
Yeah, you shut it down, and, you know, get my, my, you know. Um, but, you know, that's not, that's more than, uh, I've heard quite a bit of the, of the start. Class.
Yeah. They're not gonna start without the chief, no. Yeah, well, when that starts, that might be when the water starts to.
Yeah.
Start cracking. It will happen, you know, uh, the fact more than just the.
Yeah, yeah, that house with an indoor pool that's, you know, that houses up the street.
There were, the walls and the pool make the class. Alright, well, uh, any, any other public comments? No, no, alright, cool, thank you, thank you. Um, and with that, and rather than adjourned, because we are recessing the hearing. We need to recess this meeting as well, and you said six thirty that we were gonna start that first meeting, but. We should recess this meeting, the same day, make it like six twenty-five. Yeah, we, we just need to get there and move, but that's it.
I make a motion that we recess the, uh.
Regular reserving.
From July third. Until July seventeenth at six twenty-five.
Alright, uh, wait a minute, uh, yeah, yeah, six twenty. Yeah, uh, because I missed that when we started, so I figured, well, we'll just do it this way, yeah, same difference. They won't put anything else on the agenda besides the hearings.
Does it, we need to have a regular meeting, that's what they think this is?
Uh, yes, but, but. The proper way of doing it is that we close the hearings and then we go back into, uh, the regular. To take ash. That, we haven't been doing that historically, but that's the way it's approved. I have just, uh. Learned that in the last sixteen months.
Okay. Well, I've been.
Uh, we're done. Uh, no, all, all in favor of recessing? Uh, the regular meeting, the June seventeenth at six twenty-five, means that if I was saying, I, alright, I. So, no, okay, we're in recess until June seven, uh, July seventeenth. Thank you.